I'd like to call to order the regular meeting in the Farver's School Committee for December 11th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Lareve?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have no citizens' input tonight, and we do have one recognition award, so we'll go down to the front of the stage. Hello, so the recognition tonight is going out to one of our members who's decided to go back to one of his other homes, the Farver's City Council. Paul's done a great job in the schools. He's concerned and caring, and we wish him well on the city council side. He's moving up, I guess. So, Paul Hart, good luck, and thanks for your years of service on the Farver's School Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and really thank you to all my colleagues, the superintendent. I'm definitely going to miss the school committee. I loved serving here, and it was eight years of a lot of fun, a lot of hard work. And, you know, just get a little emotional about it, but I'm going to miss a lot of the people, the leadership team, the superintendent, my colleagues, and also the staff and the teachers and the district and everyone that works very hard for their children. So, thank you again. Thank you.
Bobby.
Congratulations, Mr. Hart, again. We have no subcommittee updates tonight. Item number five is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, let me give you a couple of updates. First, let me start with the holiday fundraiser that occurred in November, late November. Our Holiday Wish fundraiser was a great success. Approximately 300 people attended the event. It was the largest one that we've had to date. The night raised $17,400, and we received additional donations. All funds received will support our neediest students for Christmas. School staff will shop, wrap gifts, and deliver them to homes so that everyone can have a joyful Christmas. We couldn't be prouder of our school staff and school community that stepped up and supported our students. Also, hiring update, as of the last meeting, November 13th, since the last meeting, we have hired 14 teachers, seven administrators, 12 paraprofessionals, three educational support staff, and seven operational staff, for a total of 43 new hires. On the other side of the ledger, we have lost seven teachers, seven paraprofessionals, four educational support staff, and two operational staff, for a total of 20 exits. We currently have 68 teacher positions posted. 10 of them are non-classroom assignments. Our biggest area of need, as has been all year, special education, ESL, science, and math. We are also sending out information to staff in recruiting on the special ed and ESL certification programs. This month, we currently have over 70 staff participating in the course reimbursement program and more enrolling for the spring semester. Our partners at UMass Dartmouth and Bridgewater State University are finalizing their offerings for the certification program, and we will have participants at both sites for this spring semester. We also have about 45 students doing student teaching or counseling practicums in our schools, and all of those folks are being recruited to dedicate themselves to follow public schools. And finally, we have, for everyone's information, we will be having a tiered-focused monitoring site visit during the week of January 22nd, 2024. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Office of Public School Monitoring will conduct a tiered-focused monitoring review of follow-up of public schools. The Office of Public School Monitoring visits each district and charter school every three years to monitor compliance with federal and state special education and civil rights regulations, so it's our turn. In addition to the onsite visit, parent outreach is an important part of the review process. The review chairperson from the Office of Public School Monitoring will send all parents of special education students online surveys that focuses on key areas of the child's special education program. Survey results will contribute to the development of a report, and during that onsite review, the Office of Public School Monitoring will interview the chairperson of the district's Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Other onsite activities may also include interviews with district staff, administrators, review of student records, and onsite observations. Any parents or individuals who want to be part of this process will be able to call Julie Evans, who is overseeing the chairperson. We will post all this information. We will also send it out via Parent Square and put it on our website so that parents have the information, but we wanted to make sure everybody knows this is coming in January, and everyone will get the information so they can get involved. And that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions? Mr. Agia?
Just a couple of things that have happened over the last 30 days that I'd like to get an update on related to some of the issues. So, we've been receiving a lot of, several calls that I received, but also correspondence on the Laterno School having an issue, and I'd like to get the superintendent's comment for the public to, what happened, how it went.
Yes, we, as you know, and we've actually communicated with families also. Principal Simpson has done that. We had, we were made aware of potential mold in a section of the school. We immediately brought a company in. We did some testing. Certainly, Mr. Mishan and his folks from FREA have been very good about communicating with us. We met with them, as a matter of fact, last week to collaborate on how we're remediating, what steps we are taking. We are doing everything in our power to remediate all the issues that are there. We brought in a company to come in to sanitize those areas, and there's going to be additional testing.
So, one of the questions I had, and we received something, a bunch of pictures from the principal, but it talks about rugs in the carpeting in the first floor, and I recall, just having, you know, paid attention over the years, that there's been other leaks that have caused flooding in the first floor. So, thinking to myself, how were there rugs in the first floor if there was obviously flooding? And then in the courtyard at that school, there's been flooding for years, and I'm curious as to why there would still be rugs? Maybe there's a good reason, but...
Yep, it's scatter rugs, absolutely, but certainly, Mr. ...
I think one of the reports said wall-to-wall rugs, which got my, scatter rugs, I understand, that's a rug that comes out and you get a new one. But I'm just curious as to what the rug issue is.
Sure, so, the rooms in question were just the scatter rugs. The wall-to-wall, we're referring to the kindergarten and pre-K areas that did not have issues. Let me take that back. They weren't the initial request for testing and issues. So, what we're doing is testing all of those rooms in the near future, and the goal is to replace a few of the rooms that we've already tested with the wall-to-wall. It's not quite wall-to-wall, but it's a huge section of in-place carpet squares. We're going to replace those with VCT tile over Christmas break, and that, as much as possible during the Christmas break, and then we'll pick up on that in the near future. So, those rugs were not damaged during the flood of '21, if I'm not mistaken. I may be off a year there. But these rugs that we're talking about are just 9x12s that we replace every two years or something, three years.
And was there actually mold found?
There was spores found in one classroom, for sure. Yes, one level was high and was found in one classroom.
And the, was there any leaks in other areas, like the ceilings?
There was indications of leaks in other areas that we've since looked at, and one area which we missed was a bathroom area down in the pre-K wing that we've identified since then, so...
The, what happens when a seal and tile is, got mold on it, or?
Should be replaced. It should be replaced, yes.
Not painted, just to get over the...
No, it should be replaced.
The, I guess, is the courtyard in the middle that leaked, that's what the other issue was in '21?
So, no, the water didn't come in from the courtyard. The water came in due to a check valve that was malfunctioning on the north side of the building. That check valve was replaced, and then we did, through the services of a contractor and some other subcontractors, cut walls, did all of the usual remediation when you have a flood.
So, the courtyard doesn't have a flooding issue or has never had a flooding?
It hasn't had, I'm not saying it never had any, but I'm saying that it doesn't have, this is not an issue as of right now, that it's coming into the building from there. No, absolutely not.
Yeah. Madam Superintendent, if we could, I've heard a lot of complaints about the flooding in the courtyard specifically. If you could do some research on that and report back to us what it is. So, at this point, it's clean, there's no mold in the building, is it safe for teachers and staff to be there and students?
Yes, for the rooms that we've tested, yes. And again, I've been asked by members of the, of FREA to take a look at some other rooms. They gave us a list of the rooms they would like looked at, and we're going to look at those, have some testing done there, and then we'll do whatever remediation is required, if we find anything.
Lastly, I saw a picture of a barrel with a half-filled with water that was apparently there for a long time. Is there a...
I have no idea where that was, but I can tell you that I seen the picture also, and it, it shouldn't have been there, especially more than a few minutes.
It's not standard operating procedure to leave a barrel like that, right?
Right, exactly. It shouldn't have been there. So, I have no idea why it was there and what it was catching, but those things will be taken care of.
And you're saying it's safe? That's the most important thing for staff. The only other comment I had was on the holiday fundraiser. So, as you know, well, I don't know if you know, I'm assuming that you know, that the committee wasn't invited formally to that, and I was just a little disheartened by it. I'm always happy to make a donation to those things, and we actually got the invitation a half an hour before the event, which shouldn't happen, and I hope moving forward, it is a worthwhile fundraiser, we should all donate to it, and I'd be happy to donate it in the future, but a half an hour notice isn't appropriate, in my opinion.
I completely agree. That was a discussion that was had before. Yes, I agree, we should have invited you, and we didn't, so I'll take responsibility for that, but I thought we had.
Thank you.
Yep.
I yield.
Next, we have the student comment. Faith, go ahead.
So, at Durfee, the eighth graders in the city, they explored opportunities at Durfee during their tours, seeing the CTE programs, early college athletics, and the music department. And then, this Thursday, December 14th, the Attorney General will be meeting with a group of students about relevant social issues, so these are from AP Gov and Student Government. And then, health assisting has finished their clinical rotations and are preparing for their CNA exams. Durfee Student Government is setting up a Spirit Week to celebrate the upcoming winter vacation, and then the Durfee Theater Company had three successful showings of Matilda the Musical in this auditorium.
Thank you, Faith.
Faith, can you give us an update on the pep rally?
I can, and this is news I like. So, third place, I believe, it was the sophomores? Yes, it was the sophomores. Juniors were second place, and seniors were first place. And then, I believe orchestra was place number one for the banner competition.
All right. Thank you.
I have two sets of minutes for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia?
I just had, I looked at the, I thought we had a budget discussion, but it's not, so it's just an update of what I've seen over the last 30 days. The Watson School has the whole place lit up, and I'm getting calls from my constituents as well as seeing it from all over the city. If you're at the south end, you can look, and every light in the place is on, and I can't imagine that we just think that's a good thing to do. But it's literally every, I thought at one point it was because there were some repairs going on, but it's every single light, I think, and every night, so something needs to, need to happen, be fixed, or whatever.
We'll check that. Oh, Kenny, Mr. Patico.
So, I can't vouch for every single night, but we do have a minimum of two to three nights a week of construction going on at Watson, second shift, because we can't work during first shift. So, the second shift is there till midnight in those buildings, but again, I can't say for sure that it's every night, and it definitely shouldn't be on Saturday and Sunday. So, if those lights are on on the weekend, then we have an issue, and I'll take care of that.
Yeah, it has happened, so I'm not sure if they don't have a control of it.
They do.
You know, they can shut the lights down?
Yes.
And the other pieces, I happen to live near there, so I go by it a lot. There's been a lot of work on weekends, there's been a lot of work on Good Friday, Black Friday was out, you know, and, like you're saying, there's second shift work going on. I'm wondering why we would pay overtime for people, and I'm assuming because they go by there and it's busy, and people probably get paid overtime, but I just don't know some of that as well. But if you could just take a look at it through the superintendent, give us a report, I'm just curious.
Sure.
Thank you, I yield.
We have two sets of minutes for approval. The regular school committee meeting from 11:13, and we're also seeking approval of the grievance subcommittee minutes from 11:27. Could I get a motion? I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just, when I look at it online, I know we had a discussion last meeting where we tabled discussion on an issue that's not on the agenda. I'm looking to wonder why.
Well, can we do this first?
Well, it's in the minutes, that's why I'm reflecting it here.
Are you talking about EAP?
Yeah, in the minutes, it says we had a discussion about the EAP program. We made a motion to carry it forward. It was before the committee, seemingly in a rush because we wanted to get it done, and it's not on the agenda and there's no correspondence, so I'm just curious why it's not on this agenda.
We were instructed to survey staff and to gather some information, and that's what we were doing, so we, our intention is to bring it before you next month. We didn't have all the information yet.
So, you're working on it?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, I got a motion, a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of travel requests. I'd like to take them all at once, if anybody has any questions. Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll on travel requests, item eight, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations.
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have one. Any discussion on donations? Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, there's a superintendent, thanks.
Okay. On behalf of Durfee High School Principal, Matthew Damaris, I request acceptance of $386.13 donation from Ohio Piled Prints. This donation will be used at the discretion of Principal Damaris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two grants tonight, item number 10. Any discussion on the grants? Mr. Agia?
I just had a question on the first one, 3.7 million, and the question is, it runs from 9/28/03. So, my question is related to what was the budgeted amount for all of these line items, and if it's different than this amount?
Can you say that one more time, Mr. Agia? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So, this total is 3.7 million?
Yep.
When we did the budget back three months before this started, in September 28th, I'm curious what the, did we anticipate getting 3.7? So, that's the amount that was slotted in all of the budgets for all of these positions, or is it different?
So, it's just the entitlement grant, so I don't know, Kevin, how does it relate from this year to before?
I'll have to get back to you, by Friday, I'll get back to you, okay? I don't exactly know what that is.
And the reason why I ask is I asked this question at the last, when we had, I think, Title I or something. So, when we do the budget July 1st, we had a lot of certain salaries, so we were off by half a million. That would mean we have half a million to spend. I'm curious if there's any money in this that we have unaccounted for. That's what the rationale, but yeah, Friday's great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 is the approval of contracts. We have a number of them. I am going to ask for a hold on Evolve, which is under Facilities Contract, is the first one. We'll take that up in executive session and come back with it. Does anybody have any others they'd like to hold? Dr. Roderick's.
Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative, I just need to abstain from that one.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Agia?
ENE.
Okay, right under Facilities, okay. We're going to hold that one, and this, Dr. Roderick's going to abstain on South Mass. Okay, anything else? Okay, can I get a motion, a second, on contracts?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. With the abstention for Dr. Roderick's on Southeastern Mass Educational Collaborative. Deb, please, okay? And ENE Systems, Mr. Agia?
I just had a question on, it looks like, it says here Sylvia Work, but I think there was other schools in it, and I'm just curious what this is as a change order?
So, it's only Sylvia? The other items were included in part of the project. This was an item that I didn't see. The items that are all on that page were all unforeseen, but there's capacity within the budget to pick those up in the Amaresco budget. This one here is outside the Amaresco budget, which is why it's coming here, and it's items that, when I originally walked through the walkthrough with the company, I told them that these areas were finished. I didn't realize that they weren't, so that's why this came up as an extra, and I didn't want to put it in to throw those numbers off inside the Amaresco budget.
Is this the, I recall when they did the walkthrough at other places, I was told that there was no heat to go into the hallways under the system? Did that correct it?
No, this is not, this is not the regular ENE budget. This is an extra with the Amaresco project. It's got nothing to do with that. That's been looked at.
And we're good, or we're going to get more?
We're okay, we're okay.
So, we're not going to get more of these, is my concern, that?
Not unless we uncover something else. I don't believe there will be any more.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Again, with the hold on Evolve after...
Motion to approve, ENE.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on everything else. Deb, please call the roll on ENE.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 12. We need to take smacks, okay, I'm sorry. Again, motion, a second, on Southeastern Mass?
There's no money on that, to see, to see, you know? It just says tuition, is that a blank check? Well, it's probably budgeted already.
So, the amount should be 332, 474, is what the amount should be.
Top thousand.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
I stand.
Yes. Item number 12 is a discussion and vote to approve the revised school calendar for the 23-24 school year, as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools.
Yes, what you have is, there was a calculation error on the last, for the last day for seniors. At Durfee, originally had said May 22nd, I believe, or, and now it is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, so it's May 28th, the Friday, May 28th, the Tuesday, May 28th, is the last day for seniors, so it doesn't change the, any other dates except for last day for seniors, because it's supposed to be 12 days, and there was, they were one day off. So, that's why we're bringing it to you.
Any discussion on the calendar?
Yes.
Motion approved with a question.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Mr. Agia?
Just when, as we're looking at this calendar and the schedule, I'm assuming that all of our schools meet the 900 or 980-hour requirement?
Yes.
That's required by law?
Right.
Do we have any documents that would show that by school?
Yes, we, they have to submit time on learning, we have to submit to DESI time on learning sheets.
Could I please ask for copies of those?
Yep.
I'm just curious what they look like. Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the calendar? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lareve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.2 is a discussion and vote to approve an addition of a school admin manager at the Robert El Mederos Resiliency Prep Academy, as presented by Kyle Riley, Principal of the Robert El Mederos Resiliency Prep Academy. Any discussion on this item? Can I get a motion, a second? Mr. Agia?
Just, as I'm looking at this, I think, you know, I'm a proponent of the RPA, and we just recently added positions to it. Personally, I would feel much more comfortable if we have a subcommittee meeting and refer this, so we can get into a detailed discussion about the school, and then bring this back this so we can get into a detailed discussion about the school and then bring this back for the next meeting if possible. Unless it's an urgent thing by the superintendent. We could schedule the meeting between now and the next meeting unless you hear otherwise. But that would be my, as chairman of that committee.
Table?
I think we, or refer it to the subcommittee so that we can have a discussion about all the situations there and then we can come back with the information rather than put the principal on the spot right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Can we refer to Mr. Riley and ask his opinion on this? Just to see if there was a need right now?
Mr. Riley, can you join us, please?
So I'd say yes to both those. Is it something we need right now? Yes, and we can wait till next month. It's one of those positions for us that we want to make sure that we're identifying student issues right away, the smaller issues and dealing with them right away. So give them feedback to kids and parents. And so it may look a little different than they do at Durfee, but I think it's a need the school sees as we're adding other positions on. But we did just thank the committee and to the superintendent with the support of adding a school adjustment counselor and an SEL. It's kind of helped bridge that gap right now. So we certainly can wait a month to go over all the positions to see how we move forward.
Okay.
Does anybody want to make a, do you?
Make a motion or refer to alternative ed subcommittee?
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 12.3 is the addition of a certified occupational therapy assistant as presented by Lori Oberchain, Assistant Superintendent of Special Ed.
I think the committee was provided just the rationale behind this. We have had a significant increase in our number of students receiving occupational therapy services on their IEPs due to initial eligibility as well as students that have come to us this year with occupational therapy services on their IEP. We are getting close to the caps that the codas have in their contract. So we are trying to be proactive so students go, don't have to go without any services by adding an additional coda at this time.
Any questions? And Mr. Agia?
So I see here this detailed report shows 55 is the cap?
Mm-hmm.
And obviously I can see there's a lot of numbers that are close to that. So when we have a situation with caps, what, if it wasn't for this, what would happen?
So?
If we have 15 more students in, let's say, and everybody's went up by three to get over the 55, what are your options as the director?
Yes. Sometimes staff take on additional cases for compensation. Otherwise, we owe compensatory services and students are put on a list.
So that's one option. Or the other option is to do what you're doing now, come before us when things get up?
And try to be proactive.
Be proactive and make changes. So I appreciate that. I work in a school, I understand what these things, how these things happen. But I do think that you need to have that right to come before us through the superintendent as needed. And we add positions as we need based on, when you're seeing this data, it's very solid data that you know these people are servicing X amount of students. So that's very clear. So I definitely support this and thank you for the detail. I yield.
Anything further? Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Rodericks?
Just one quick question. Are we seeing just a bigger influx at the pre-K level? Or are we seeing it across all grade levels right now?
It's usually the younger levels, to be honest with you.
I know usually it is, but I'm just wondering if you're seeing just with our kids kind of being home for such a long time, if you're seeing it at some of the older grades as well?
Not so much.
Okay, it's really the little guys.
But the thing that we're seeing is that our students, when they're starting to enter middle school, they're not being discharged from services, right? So they still need those services as they're getting older.
I yield.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, could you please call the roll on now adding a certified occupational therapy assistant?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.4 is a discussion and vote to approve an additional administrative assistant for the Office of Teaching and Learning as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
Question? Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia?
I'm trying to figure this out. In the documentation, it says it's for the Office of Instruction and the Office of Student Support. Is there no support now?
There is, right now we have one administrative assistant and one clerk. The clerk supports the Office of Teaching and Learning as well as the MLL department with adding another assistant superintendent. So Dr. Bronhardt, that didn't have its own separate admin assistant. So we have all these directors, we have these departments that have grown, and we have one person, they're sharing one person between the two of them.
And it's always been shared?
With the directors. Well, we didn't have three assistant superintendents.
Well, we had them for a year and a half.
Right, so we haven't brought that up.
So the way I'm reading this, it looks like as if we've always had one for the Office of Instruction.
Well, we've always had one up on that floor for all the needs of the assistant superintendents that were up there. If you recall, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services was vacant for an entire year.
No, I understand. So if you go back three years, four years, five years, six years?
Yep.
The Office of Instruction has always had an administrative assistant slash executive secretary like you have?
Right.
Like everybody else. So the way I'm reading this is it sounds like as if we have a new assistant superintendent who needs the equivalent of that. So each assistant superintendent has one of those. That's not what's listed here. So I would be totally comfortable with the fact that we need an executive assistant, administrative, whatever the wording is, just like we just did that for Ms. Oberchain as an assistant superintendent, that we should have one for Dr. Curly, one for Dr. Bronhardt. This is confusing, in my opinion. It's probably the same budgetarily, but it should be one working for each of the assistant superintendents makes more sense than, we're going to share, by me reading this, it looks like they're going to share two people double, like it doesn't, it's more convoluted and directly, this is what you need.
You're right. That isn't the intent, that they will each have somebody assigned to them. But right now, we have a person. We have not said, okay, this person's going to work with Dr. B and this person's going to work with Dr. Curly. So once, our hope was that once we have that, then we can divide those roles and say, this person's going to work with, you know, Office of Instruction and this person will work with Dr. B's team.
But if you, if you rewind three years ago, four years ago, before we hired an assistant superintendent for SEL, Support Services, whatever the terminology is, we always had an executive assistant to the curriculum director slash assistant superintendent for curriculum before anyone was hired in that job. I am saying that that person works for Dr. Curly. That's that position or the assistant superintendent for instruction. That's how I see it because that's how it's been for five, six, seven years, eight years, 10 years. So to me, logically, that person has been working in that office, works there. Dr. Bronhardt just got the job without an assistant, administrative assistant like that. I think this request should be a person for her. Now, if you as superintendent say, I think that whoever's in that position's better in this one, so be it. But here, we're voting on a second person for the Office of Instruction and I'm going to vote no. I will vote yes if you say that this is what it's for, it's for one for each person. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying. The Office of Teaching and Learning encompasses all of, so we're all one big team. But certainly, if that's what you need clarification on, I would like to respectfully request an additional admin assistant to service Dr. Bronhardt.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With a question?
Ms. Larrabee?
So does that mean that that'll be the second one?
Right. There's one that will service Dr., will work with Dr. Curly and her team and one that will work with Dr. B.
So with the future, you're saying the future is for each one of them to have their own administrative assistant?
They do, they will. After this vote, they will.
After this one?
Yes.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
That's why I said, is this the second or the third?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Dr. Rodericks?
Just to piggyback on that, when I read that, that's how I read it too, was that Dr. Curly was basically getting two? And it was like a 1.5 for Dr. Curly and like a 0.5 for Dr. Bronhardt? That's how it kind of read to me. So I appreciate the clarification.
A little greedy, Dr. Curly.
And I think it just, no, it was written as a piece of coming together and collaboration because truthfully, that is exactly what's happened since I've stepped into the role. The administrative assistant in the Office of Instruction has completely just been part of the work that we've been doing. But I understand what you're saying too. But that's where the rationale came from because from the beginning, we've been sharing and it's our way to split the share.
Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll? Who seconded the motion?
Second.
Ms. Larrabee?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.5 is a second read and vote to approve the staff handbook as presented by Tom Coogan, Director of Human Resources. Any discussion? I have a motion?
Motion approved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One court.
Mr. Agia?
This just reflects the changes that were made last meeting.
We inserted what was approved last month into the handbook.
Correct. Thank you. I yield.
Deb, please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. First read, Superintendent's Recommended 2025 Budget Priorities as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools.
So this is the first read? What we do traditionally is we've surveyed our department leads as well as our principals, worked with them and to gather information from them in regards to the priorities, what, where they see that our investments, we need to focus our investments in. It doesn't look very different than what it has because the work is about deepening the work that we have in place. It's never a good thing if every year we came up with a totally different thing. Nobody wants to see inconsistency. So this is the first read. What I would ask is that, you know, you look through that. Certainly, it is an opportunity for you also to give us some feedback. We want to focus on the, on the HR side. We have to put a focus on, you know, recruitment and retention, which is, you know, we're opening negotiations for bargaining. We want to, we want to hold on to our people, but we also want to entice people to come to Fall River. So that has to be a major, major focus for our work in addition to providing, to deepening the work that we're doing with our new teachers and supporting them and professional development. We want to focus on, we know special education needs to be another priority, not only in deepening the work that's already in place, but Ms. Oberchain has been working on and looking at assessing the current programs and how we will create and revise our programming model to be more inclusive. We also want to invest in, continue to invest in our multilingual learners. We're looking to make some program improvements, expanding on our co-teaching model as well as obviously our dual language program at Viveris is rolling up ESL curriculum resources again so that we are providing, it's no secret that our special ed students and our ESL students are behind their counterparts and we need to look at programs and we need to look at how we're supporting, how we're supporting the adults in supporting our students and investing money in that. Also, in core instruction, we need to continue to provide resources for our staff to continue to work with Tier Two and Tier Three, working with scheduling, providing intervention opportunities. We will continue to expand with our college and career pathways, which includes early college, career tech, education, alternative ed. We have to look at alternative ed programming, not only at the Robert Mederos RPA, but also we need to have some alternative options at our middle schools and at our high school. Alternative ed is not one size fits all. It's really alternatives and we need to be doing some research and some work and actually doing some work where we provide opportunities for kids to be successful at all of our schools. Student support and strategic integration. We are also looking again at curriculum resources, vertical alignment with that, partnering with our neighbors, parent academy programming where we are going to gain some traction and really involving our parents as well as staff development. We all know that our kids are coming in with significant needs and we have to support our staff in supporting those needs. And facilities and operations, we have done an incredible job with expanding our pre-K. We need to look at our physical space and figure out how we are going to rework some of our schools as well as we're investing in HVAC air quality throughout the district. Continuing with our capital improvements and safety and security is a priority at every single school and in our district. And then instructional technology, we have, Mr. Cabral has done an amazing job in making sure that we are one-to-one district. We have technology, state-of-the-art technology in all buildings. We have to have a plan, a maintenance plan as well as a capital plan where we are able to make sure that we are able to not only continue with that, but make improvements and cycle that technology. And we are looking at our websites and how we can make that more user-friendly for and update it. So those are, that's the proposed, proposed investments where we're going to put money into it, obviously. We are welcome, we welcome you to give us some feedback. This is the first read and we'll come back around next month with the final proposal.
Any comments or discussion? Mr. Agia?
Just a few things. One is a question. So we, at this present time, haven't even done the superintendent's evaluation. That was supposed to be done by contract in August, I believe. And then we said we were going to wait until the MCAS scores came out and we haven't received anything from administration or leadership related to that. So I, for one, would like to do that evaluation before we talk about next year because a lot of these items are the same. So therefore, there should be comments, either good, bad, or indifferent related to these. So I'm not sure if anybody has any.
We'll, we'll schedule that. We have, we'll schedule a subcommittee so we can take care of that.
But it's got to be done, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's not like bringing something up that?
Nope.
Can't be done. My other thing is that I, when I look at this, I think I mentioned this last year, over a year ago, that we had some issues in several departments that we needed to revamp, we need to do things a lot different. And we're working hard on a lot of things, but we're sort of stuck in a lot of ways. And I think we need to do something a little more bold and intense related to that. I brought up the issue back over a year ago about hiring a deputy superintendent that could oversee several of the departments that do not have assistant superintendent through line where there's no assistant superintendent for a few items. I also think in a district this size with the complexities that we have, as superintendent, I also think in a district this size, with the complexities that we have, as superintendent, Mrs. Potts, you need some assistance at a, at a, an executive level above the assistant superintendents that can help you manage this entire district, hold people accountable, put systems in place, as well as doing the negotiations properly over the next year, because I, for one, think we've been lacking in that regard over the years. So as I look at all of these priorities, they, they all seem good and sound good, but we've been talking about these for years, and I'd like to have, a year ago, you said you were gonna talk to your team about it and discuss ways and options, now we have some other things happening, so I'd like to get a report from you relative to whether you think that's a good idea, a bad idea, along with your rationale. I, for one, have told you personally, I've said it publicly, we need to do this for the good of the district to move forward, and, um, I really would like to get your opinion on that, as well as your team, and I'm happy to meet privately to discuss those concerns, but I can't stress that as much as I, I could here, that we are stuck right now. We need to do something that's gonna make this district move to the next level, and I think hiring a qualified, uh, deputy superintendent will do just that. Just my opinion. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Thank you. Item number seven is discussion and vote to use of the Durfee High School Nagel Auditorium on January 2nd for the inauguration of municipal offices as presented by Cam Pacheco. Any discussion on this item? Looking for a motion and second?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Um, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Um, again, for your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations, um, hires, and regretfully, some death notices. Um, I don't think we have to take a vote on this, do we, Mr. Assan?
Yes.
Okay. Any-
You have to vote to accept that.
Oh, uh, can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Anybody have any new business? Hearing none. Uh, do we have a request for executive session?
It would be E and E.